We're good? Lunch, are we good?
I would expect nothing less.
We are back in session and will continue with the EICS committee. Ms. White.
Welcome back, everyone. Before lunch, we had covered our action on first read and our action items as well as our consent items under the Education Innovation and Charter School Committee. We'll now move on to discussion. The first of those is EICS III, and this is a request from Telra Institute to increase its enrollment and to defer grade four enrollment in year one. Mr. Machado.
Thank you, Ms. White. Again, Telra Institute is located in Mecklenburg County. They plan to open in August of 2021, so they're now just beginning their planning year. They will serve grades K through five when they're all built out, and they were approved to open K-4, and they're asking the State Board of Ed to defer opening of fourth grade for the first year and increase enrollment so they can focus on academics on K through three before they go into fourth grade. And you can see on the chart that's in front of you, they're adding, in year one, they're adding two students; in year two, they'll increase 11 students; and in year three, they'll increase by a total of 60 students. And Charter School Advisory Board did vote unanimously for this recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Board members, questions about this particular charter school's request to move their class configuration around one year and add some additional students? If you'll note, we, on consent today, EICS VIII is their request to implement a weighted lottery, and it's implied that the weighted lottery is the reason for the student change in enrollment. No questions on that one. That'll be back for us for a vote next month. Let's move to EICS IV, and I will note again that Mr. Buxton is recusing himself from this discussion and subsequently on the vote that will be held next month. Mr. Machado.
Dr. Townsend Smith, I've lost audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So, Mr. Machado, we're ready to move to EICS IV, Pave Raleigh's request to separate from its education management organization.
Okay, thank you. Pave Southeast Raleigh Charter School is requesting to separate from its EMO. They're in Wake County. They opened up in 2016. They're approved to serve K through eight. They are currently K-six. The EMO that they're partnered with is Pave Schools Incorporated. Their original contract ends June 30, 2020, though it has expired. Pave Schools Incorporated is no longer planning on supporting schools in North Carolina. So this is a mutual agreement. There will be no change in their education plan or their governance plan. They will probably come back with a name change request later after the board has an opportunity to vet different names. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from board members about Pave's request to separate from its EMO? Okay, hearing none. Let's move to EICS V. This is the Charter School Performance Framework Report, and, Mr. Machado, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. This is the 2018-19 Charter School Performance Report. We give this report to the State Board of Ed every year, and it is the main tool that the office of charter school uses to monitor our charter schools across the state. And again, I want to emphasize that this is a 2018-19 charter school, a performance framework report, and it is not to be confused with our annual charter school report that we will be presenting to you later next year. We will discuss how this performance framework ties into the State Board of Ed's educational goals. We will talk about the process of the performance framework, and we'll actually talk about how our schools did with compliance to the performance framework. What is the performance framework? This is a standard tool that our office uses to monitor the compliance for our charter schools across the state. We use this to monitor governance or operational, financial, and academic performance on all of our charter schools. Currently, there are 201 charter schools. It is a platform where all the information is consolidated together so all stakeholders in the state can see it. And again, it's what we use to monitor our schools academically, operationally, and financially. And all the metrics or measures that are in the performance framework are directly tied to State Board of Ed policy, the charter agreement that they sign, and the general statute when it comes to charter schools. This report is done annually. We gather this information from all of our schools every year, and we do it across the academic school year. We used to do it at the end of the year, but we found that our schools enjoy, like it better for us to put it in smaller chunks so they can keep submitting the information. All the information that is in the performance framework is collected through a cloud-based, secure platform called Epicenter. It's what our office uses for all documents when it comes to charter schools. And we get this information from the schools themselves. We get it from other divisions within DPI, and we also get it from agencies outside DPI such as DHHS. You can see what the actual report looks like. There's quite a few items that have to be submitted. In our office, we'll collect, review, and approve over 3,300 documents. Now, this is a very heavy lift for our office, and it definitely emphasizes the fact that there is a lot of accountability and monitoring for our charter schools. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the entire performance framework is tied to the State Board of Ed's strategic plan and their goals. And obviously, we want to increase the number of charter schools meeting the academic, operational, and financial goals. And one of the main goals that you as a State Board of Ed have been discussing quite extensively lately, which we obviously support and are part of, is increasing diversity and equity within our charter schools. And you can see, we discussed this a little earlier when we were talking about the NC Access Grant, but you can see that 26 charter schools now are using a weighted lottery. And we have 34 charter schools, hopefully that you will approve tomorrow. It's a total of 60 charter schools across the state that will begin using a weighted lottery, giving enrollment preference to economically disadvantaged students. This is 30% of our charter schools, and it's a huge increase from the five that we had just several years ago. And we'll begin to talk about our academic outcomes. And these are the measures that are used to determine how our schools are doing according to this goal. And all the information that we get for this chart right here you're looking at comes from the Accountability Division at DPI. None of this is self-reported. This is the actual information that we get from the Accountability Division. And you can see the percentage of charter schools receiving a school performance grade of A or B has actually increased from 2017-18 to 2018-19, from 41.7% to 44.4. We're very happy about that. And the number of schools meeting or exceeding growth increased from 68.5% to 69.1%. We haven't quite hit our target of 75%, but we are very pleased that we are increasing that percentage. This gives you a breakdown on the number of schools that we have and where they fall in the A, B, C, D, or F level. And again, you can see that A and B has increased, C has decreased a little bit, and D and F schools have increased. We understand that we have a lot of work to do to get these schools out of Ds and Fs and out of low performing, and we are putting in several measures to try to do that. That's something that we need to continue to work really hard on and help our schools in this category. And then during the year of 2018-19, new charter schools were closed. We recommended to State Board of Education that they close with CSAB's recommendation, and they were closed. I just want to point out that is the ultimate accountability. If these schools are not performing like they said they would, then they should have their charter revoked. So again, this is the ultimate accountability, not being allowed to stay open. Okay, you can see here where the percentage of charter schools receiving a C or better, 75% up slightly, and actually it's down just a little bit from 17-18. And then the percentage of Ds and F schools has increased slightly too. And as I mentioned in the earlier slide, that is something that we are very aware of and working hard to improve. This shows you the number of low-performing charter schools in the state and the number of continuing low-performing charter schools in the state. And you can see that unfortunately, the number increased from 28 to 40, and in low-performing, continuing low-performing, it went from 28 to 37. Again, that is something that we are working on. As far as the continuing low-performing schools, there were, I believe there were four or five charter schools that were not low-performing but still stayed in that continuing low-performing because that's based on your performance for two or the last three years. And I think it was five or six charter schools had either met or exceeded growth that were still in the continuing low-performing category. So we are seeing some progress, and we want to see a lot more. This graph will show you how our charter schools are doing with the different subgroups for their grade level proficiency. You can see, DC, 80% of the schools were comparable to their LEA, and it goes down from economically disadvantaged all the way to male and female. And so out of, there's a graph here that shows that 69% of our schools met the goal to be, for grade level proficiency, to be comparable to their LEA. Comparable is defined as being within 5% of the LEA. And out of that 69%, 56 of the schools were in operation one to nine years, 69 were in operation over 10 years. That's a trend we see a lot, that the longer the schools stay open, the better they seem to perform. And this shows that 65% of our schools met the goal to be college and career-ready in being comparable to the LEA. 51 of the schools were one to nine years, 67 had been operating over 10 years. And to be college and career-ready, the students are scoring a four or five on their EOGs or EOCs. And then we're going to move on to the operation on financial outcomes for our schools. Again, this lines up with goal two, to improve school and district performance by 2005, increase the number of charter schools meeting exceeding or exceeding academic operational financial goals. And we'll go, the next chart will go into that a little more detail. This chart will show the number of, the percentage of charter schools that have either met or exceeded all their financial and operational measures. And you can see there's been a steady growth since 2014 to 2018-19. Very pleased with that. We'd like to thank that that comes from more support that they receive from our office, but it shows that while we still have schools that need to work harder on their academic performance, they are doing an excellent job when it comes to meeting their operational and financial requirements. And out of our 35 renewal schools in 2018-19, every one of the schools either met or exceeded their operational measures. We find that when the schools are in their renewal year, they tend to make sure everything is in order, so we're very happy to report that every one of the schools either met or exceeded their goals. And concerning financial compliance, you'll see that 175 of our schools were compliant. There were two situations that weren't, that were unresolved, and we had five that were non-compliant. The majority of the financial non-compliant is from schools that had drastic enrollment decreases that put them in a less financially solvent position. And when they're in financial non-compliant, the normal action is they will be put on month-to-month financial installments, and our office will increase the monitoring when it comes to onsite site visits and things like that. Here's a summary that shows you the number of schools, how if they exceeded, met, or did not meet on their performance, their performance framework goals. And again, there's, I believe it's 19 different measures that they're tested on, and they must meet at least 80% to have met their goals. We've been asked by the State Board several months ago to give a quick review on the virtual charter schools. So in the next few slides, we'll talk specifically about the virtual charter schools, North Carolina Virtual Academy and the North Carolina Cyber Academy. Both of these schools are in their fifth year of a nine-year pilot, excuse me, fourth year of a four-year pilot, I mean, eight-year pilot, which extends to 2022-23. As far as what the office of charter school does to monitor these schools, they must come before CSAB every year to discuss their academic performance. We request their enrollment and attendance and withdrawal data every month, and NC Cyber Academy appears part of CSAB every month in accordance to the stipulations that the State Board of Ed put on when they were allowed to separate from their EMO connections. This shows what both virtual charter schools' academic performance was, and again, I remind you, this was 2018-19. We did not have any scores from last year. We did get NC Virtual Academy's internal data from their internal testing, and it did show, and we've showed that to you before, and it did show a respectable increase in both math and reading. And this is how the charter school, the virtual charter schools did with the different subgroups in when it came to grade level performance and on their EOCs. And this is tracking the virtual charter school enrollment over the four years that they were open, and you can see that it has increased based on General Assembly statute and State Board of Ed policy. So that is a quick rundown on our performance framework, and happy to answer any questions. And I hope I was enthusiastic with this report as I was with the NC Access report.
You were, Mr. Machado. Thank you very much. So, board members, I'll turn it to you. Surely you have questions. Vice Chair Duncan, I know that you had suggested that perhaps you wanted to ask a few.
Well, thank you, Ms. White. I'll start by saying this. I can really appreciate that putting this report together is a lot of work, so it's important that anything I say is preface with thanks to a department that does not have an overburdened personnel to put together significant reports to go ahead and do that. So I do appreciate the work that's gone into it, and the fact you have to do two reports a year that have some similarities just adds to the burden of what your office has to do and lay available personnel. In the past, as you know, Mr. Machado, I've raised concerns about we've gotten away from factual reporting and trying to do a little bit too much, arguably, spinning of the information. That's maybe not the right word to use, but advocacy has crept in, maybe is a good way to say, on occasion, I think. And I still have that concern, and this report raises it. To specifically just make my point, if I will, without trying to go through a number of different sections of the document, page three of the document, which is talking about, and I'm not looking at the report as opposed to the slides, but page three is talking about academic measures. And under academic measures, of course, one of the measures you pointed out was 75% to meet or exceed growth. And this particular report year was 69.1% met growth. And so if you look at the bottom of page three, it starts with that fact, 123 of 178 qualifying charter schools are 69.1% met or exceeded expected growth for 2018-19. Then explains that six schools would not be included and why in the next sentence. Then it says the targeted measure value was 75%. It then goes on for the sentence that I think illustrates the care that needs to be taken to be factual reports. All of that's clearly factual reporting. The next sentence says, "The percentage of schools meeting this measure has shown a slight increase below target over the previous three reporting years." I had to read that three times to figure out they were saying there's a bigger gap and it's being presented as an increase. And it's, of course, not an increase on average over the previous three years. And I'm not sure why it doesn't just say the percentage of schools meeting this measure has decreased over the previous three reporting years, which would be an accurate factual statement if one needed to be made at all. Because the next page has the chart that shows that in fact, as you point out in your presentation, it was a slight increase over the 68.5% of the previous year, but was significantly down from the 73.4% it had declined from in the 2014-15 year. And so I think the factual report is important, and I don't know that some of the commentary is what I've expressed concerns about before, and I still have those concerns. It is factual information that's required in the report. It's important factual information, and I think how it's expressed should continue to be with your effort at clarity and straightforwardness. The slide presentation included in a couple places comparisons to LEAs, and it's under my understanding is the other report is the one where you might make some comparisons with LEAs, not this report. If I'm wrong about that, you'll help correct me, I'm sure. Those are just a few observations, and that's my shorthanded way of saying I still have concerns about the phraseology utilized in the report, which I think is important if very fact-based presentations. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Duncan. Questions from other board members? Okay, hearing none. This will be back before us next month for approval. And that will bring us to the last item of the day, which is a discussion about an enrollment consideration for the virtual charter schools. Before we begin our discussion, I wanted to make it a matter of public knowledge that my vice chair and I were, did not have consensus on this item as discussion. So at the latitude of Chairman Davis and Board chairmanship, I'm bringing it to board members for an item for discussion today at the table. Due to a surge in the number of families who are searching for virtual education options as we have been faced with off-site learning because of the pandemic, and some but not all districts across our state have been able to launch their own virtual academies. Most of these academies largely, but not only, are present in our larger, more wealthy counties where many, many resources and many choices are already present. There are many counties in our state which don't have good quality access to meet the digital divide. And so today, I wanted to bring to the board's attention that we do have two options for virtual learning that serve students statewide. So regardless of which public school unit or LEA you're in, North Carolina Cyber Academy and North Carolina Virtual Academy both have options for online learning for students across our state. Today, they have a combined waitlist of almost 9,000 students. You'll see those numbers posted along with the attachment to this eBoard item. For the purpose of discussion today, I just would like to talk with my colleagues about an idea that we consider a short-term option for increased enrollment for these two cyber academies, or I won't say cyber academy because that points to one, but our two virtual academies to meet the need and the demand for increased choice in virtual learning across our state for a period that would serve the pandemic. So we're not, I wouldn't be suggesting that we increase this enrollment long-term, but solely for the means of meeting the needs of students who cannot access quality instruction in a in-class classroom. So with that, I'll stop my comments, and I know Mr. Machado is prepared to answer any questions, and I'll invite conversation from board members at this time after Mr. Machado concludes any remarks that he might want to make about this.
Thank you, Ms. White. I have reached out to both school leaders, NC Cyber and NC VA, to ask them if they would support this motion, if they were in favor of it. Both of them went and talked to their boards. We had several discussions. They are very receptive to increasing their enrollment. They, both of the schools acknowledged, to me in our conversations, that if this was approved, that they would only increase with what they could efficiently and effectively do as far as hiring more teachers and staff. So they are very much in support of this idea, but they, neither one of them gave me the impression that they want to do this wholesale increases. They want to do it strategically and efficiently.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Board members, I'll turn to you for any questions or just input that you might have.
Madam Chair, this is Dan Forrest, if you can hear me.
Yes, sir. Lieutenant Governor, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you first for, and I know you understand you didn't have consensus amongst your two chairs there, co-chairs, but I do appreciate you bringing this conversation up as we have had hundreds of thousands of calls from people trying to find options, virtual options for their kids. Obviously, we know we're in the middle of something very unique and different, and we want to make sure that we provide every opportunity out there for our young people to have opportunities to learn virtually. So sometimes, some of these things are right under our nose, and we don't seem to pay too much attention to them. But I think there are things going on here that we should pay attention to. One is that these virtual schools, virtual charter schools, actually provide computers and internet connectivity to students that don't have it. And that really is one of our biggest challenges with remote learning right now, is the fact that we have the haves and the have-nots in the midst of the same Plan B or Plan C going on across our state, that there are so many districts that don't have any virtual option at all. Some are going to be trying to make it up. They're going to be trying to do this from scratch when there are folks here that know how to do this, know how to train teachers, and can do it in a way that parents can understand. And again, providing the devices, providing the internet connectivity is critical to that. The other piece that I will add, that something that we talk about, but I don't think we talk about enough with this rollout, special needs students and IEP students out there, that these virtual academies will actually provide folks to go into the homes if necessary, if that's what the parents desire, and to help out these parents with special needs students. I think that's absolutely critical, is something that should be doing very baseline across the state right now, and they provide that option as well. So there are, there are lots of things on the table here that are, I think, right under our nose, and they seem to make a lot of sense, and I think we should definitely give this a consideration and a look. So these parents, these 7,000, 9,000, whatever it is, parents that are looking at these options may have another option for their students.
Thank you, Lieutenant Governor. Other comments from board members?
Ms. White, Ms. Camnitz, I do have a couple of questions as we've been listening to this presentation.
Is this?
It's Ms. Camnitz.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Camnitz.
So looking at the waitlist for the two academies, do we have any data on where these students are located in the state? In other words, are they coming from the counties that have not planned to do a virtual academy? Can we track them?
Our office, Ms. Camnitz, we don't have that data. I'm sure I could get the schools to provide that, but at this time, I don't have where they're, where these people on the waitlist are located.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Machado. Ms. White, if it's okay, a couple more questions.
Yes, please, just keep going.
So, Mr. Machado, you talked about the fact that if this expansion were to be approved, that the two virtual charters would then have to hire more teachers in order to accommodate the increase, which is not surprising. But I'm wondering where these teachers who would have experience in virtual learning might come from at a time when I think that there's a shortage of experienced teachers in that area all across the state?
Well, I think that both virtual charter schools, because they have been in existence for four or five years now, have a very good onboarding training. Finding good teachers is a challenge for all schools across the state. But again, this is a vehicle and a method that they use, so they're confident that they will be able to train these teachers in time to open up school.
Okay, thank you. And one final question. You mentioned that they were able, I think Lieutenant Governor Forrest mentioned that both academies were able to offer connectivity to anyone who enrolled in the school. And I'm a little curious about what that looks like in places where there is no broadband. I mean, how is that provided?
Lieutenant Governor, do you want to respond to that?
Obviously, it depends, Ms. Camnitz. I mean, there will obviously be places where there is no connectivity, satellite connectivity, hotspot connectivity. They try every option they can to meet that need. So it's on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the actual service is and location. As you know, it'd be very different in the mountains than it would be in the coastal plain, for instance.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. Yes, thank you, Ms. Camnitz.
This is Olivia, Ms. White.
Yes, Dr. Rockstein.
Thank you very much. The questions that Ms. Camnitz just raised are very pertinent questions, the one around the connectivity piece especially. As I think through this, when I began, when I read the item last night and began thinking through it, it began to make, what began to resonate with me is our commitment to equity. And I believe this item is couched under Goal One that has to do with ensuring or leveraging opportunities so that disadvantaged students of color, low-performing students have access to our charter model. And I like that. I think this is, this is the way the State Board of Education can point to a goal and point to an opportunity such as the virtual charters and say, "Look, we believe in what we say, and we're doing it." I also want to think that even though connectivity may be an issue, I'm not going to begin to even map that out, where the dead spots are in North Carolina, somewhere right in my backyard. But I think that our parents are probably, or families are probably, thinking more about the virtual options mainly because of some certainty around planning their daily schedules and their daily lives, having to juggle between concerns about the continuity of their child's education and keeping themselves employed and finding childcare. So I would imagine that their concerns are looking to an option that has some degree of certainty. My other point goes back to the year and time when the State Board of Education approved the virtual charters. And I had, I had a series of reservations, and I think I articulated each one of them. I was not fully on board because I couldn't imagine a kindergarten child sitting in front of a computer. I've evolved in my understanding. Part of my evolution has been the past few months in terms of how we've had to flip K-12 in North Carolina, K-16 actually, had to flip our classrooms from traditional to remote. And we've done that with some bumps in the road, but we are still managing the bumps and moving on. So I would support this item that you have brought before us today. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you, Dr. Rockstein. Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes, Mr. Hall, go ahead.
Thank you. I have one question. The 9,17 figures that I see here, example, let's do NC Cyber Academy, kindergarten, 248. Is that 248 inclusive of the current waiting list and others who have applied? Or is different? Or that the new, the 248 is new parents, starting to apply, so? You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, Mr. Hall, I think you're asking, are the numbers displayed on the, on the attachment that you see? Those numbers are representative of folks who are on a waitlist, meaning there are not currently seats available for those students. So at the kindergarten level, my 50-year-old eyes tell me it was 248 different families, 248 different kindergartners that are seeking seats who don't currently have a seat.
Right, but my question is, are these new, the 248, is inclusive of the new parents that seek? I mean, like, it was 240 before eight more applied?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Yes, sir, they are new students seeking enrollment for the first time in the academy. So for a total of 9,000, about, well, 8,500.
Right, 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 somewhere around there. It's about 8,500 new parents that apply for the virtual academy.
Mr. Machado, you want to chime in?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. White. That is actually the cumulative total of the waitlist, including, it is the most current information that we got from the schools this week. So it includes the ones that were on months ago and have applied recently. And to answer Ms. Camnitz's question about where these people are coming, where these waitlists, what counties are coming from, I was able to find that information, and they're coming from almost every single county across the state, wide variety. And I can certainly send this to Dr. Townsend-Smith so she can distribute it to the board.
That would be great. Mr. Hall, did that satisfy your question?
Right, right, right. Thank you for it. The other thing I was going to say also is that when you talk about connectivity, like Jill was saying, and the Lieutenant Governor was saying about the West and the East, that is a big problem, tremendous problem. As he said, they will have to be selected and where they could offer, they being the virtual academy, because of the broadband. I wish we did anymore, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Ms. White, JB.
Hi, JB, thank you.
Observation, couple observations and a question. I'm thinking about, when we talked about maintaining the enrollment for NC Virtual and the conversation by NC Virtual, which was, "We want to hold down enrollment despite the fact we're into what we know is going to be more of an online environment because we want to up our quality from where we've been." It seemed like a very deliberate and prudent agenda. And so for the students that are already in the virtual academy, I guess I have some concern that we're now flying in the face of that recommendation by the virtual academy to really focus on their own students and their own craft and move out of the grade that they were in. And I think, I don't want to ascribe the same to the cyber academy, but I would suspect our same concern and focus for the existing students there and their quality is important. The second is, I am concerned that on August 5th, we're talking about hiring new teachers, hiring new support staff, finding computers, finding internet access, and all the other attendant issues, and worried that we're going to be promising more than we can deliver or these charters will on our behalf. The third thing is, the waitlist, if my calculation is right, is like half of 1% of our student body in the state. So we're not, it's not like we've got a stampede that we're trying to address here. But given what you said earlier about students that don't have access to our, I think you said, our urban counties or our larger counties in the virtual, and here's my question, are we talking about limiting the expansion to students that are in certain county or district that don't have a virtual option? Was that the point of what you were saying?
That's a great question. I certainly think that providing choice where there is none should be a priority. And so we can ask the Office of Charter Schools to have that conversation with both of those entities, and that could be a stipulation, if you say. But yes, many, my main concern is that there is, again, a lack of choice for families seeking online options and that, I'm not picking on Wake County, but you know, Wake County has had the abundant privilege and resource to start its own virtual academy, and I think over 75,000 families have opted for that choice. And other smaller counties across our state simply haven't had the resources or the means or the time to do so. So certainly, that would be something we would entertain.
Mrs. White, this is Dan Forrest again. And if I could just add in there, Mr. Buxton, that 7,000 students obviously isn't a large percentage of students, but it is larger than about 60 of our school districts across the state. So, you know, if you think about it in those terms, you know, a large number of our state kind of fits that category of students. And the other thing that may help here with your first question, Mr. Buxton, because I understand from Mr. Machado that there's going to be like a fluid, open enrollment. It's not just accept everybody instantaneously and hope you can meet the need, but my understanding is it's going to be based on the way these schools would operate, it's based on the teachers that they could train and how quickly they could get that done. Mr. Machado, could you speak to that as well?
Yes, Lieutenant Governor, thank you. That is exactly the conversation that I've had with both leaders. When we first discussed this possibility, that your first question was, how much do they want to increase it? And we weren't sure, but whatever the increase was, could be decided by your school, your board, to make sure that you could do it, like I said, efficiently and effectively. So what Lieutenant Governor just said is exactly right. They're not looking to double their enrollment. They only want to do it with the numbers that they can successively enroll and educate.
And I think that, as a follow-up comment to that, I don't think, I don't think this is a discussion centered around, could we, to we post all 9,000 students? No, I think it's up to the individual schools to determine how many additional students they might accommodate, but the direction must come from the State Board to allow them for that, to have that accommodation, or else we've not exercised an option at our fingertips that could allow additional choice for the students across our state, if that makes sense.
Ms. White, I have a question. This is Donna Tipton Rogers.
Yes, Donna.
I was just wondering, how many students per grade are enrolled in the cyber academy and virtual academy now? And what does that dispersment look like in rural areas across the state, in the mountains and in the east? If I could get that information, that would be helpful as well.
Okay, so let me, let me just do this. Since I'm being, knowing that this was a late add and knowing that we are, we still have quite a bit of our agenda ahead of us, could I get consensus from board members to gather some additional information to get in front of you for a complete discussion to include some of the questions that have been asked here at the table today? If you, if you have, if you agree to that consensus, if you don't agree to that consensus, then speak up, but if not, then we'll have direct Mr. Machado to pull together some data for us to review. Okay, not hearing any dissent, then, Mr. Machado, on behalf of the State Board, would you please put together some of the data and gather some additional information about total number of students that each of these virtual academies thinks they might be able to accommodate and which, and what students are being served across our state, at which grade level, and what counties they're coming from?
Yes, I can get that information.
Okay, thank you so much. Any additional comments?
This is Dan Forrest again. Could we have Mr. Machado actually share the plan that OCS put together? Could we share that with the board so they have the whole plan?
I think that would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes?
Okay, would you like to do that, for me to do that right now, Ms. White? Okay, would you like to do that, for me to do that right now, Ms. White?
If you, at the chair's pleasure. Okay, sure. Mr. Machado, if you have that information, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Good. That NCVA and NCCA would grant fluid and open enrollment privileges during the tendency of a pandemic year only, restrict this to the upcoming 2020, 2021 school year. Both Virtual Charter Schools would continue to be held accountable for currently enrolled students under the state's Accountability Framework and Officer Charter School Performance Framework. Each year, all eligible students must take state-required assessments. All charter schools shall comply with North Carolina's accountability model unless otherwise approved by State Board of Education. A new cohort of students growing for the pandemic 2020-21 school year would be held accountable, separate and apart from the currently enrolled students. For students enrolling in the pandemic 2020-21 school year, NCVA and NCCA would be granted a cohort waiver for, one, North Carolina testing and accountability grades. However, testing would be administered for the 2021-21 entering cohort for purposes of student records. Any withdrawal rates, participation rate less than 95% of North Carolina state tests, and relief from the high school dropout rate. If a student were to drop out of NCVA or NCCA, then the remaining ADM would be returned to the state district the school originated from after the 2020-21 school year, in event that the student left at any point during the school year. And I think Dr. Townsend Smith might have that also, she might be able to put up on the board.
If you could send that to her, Mr. Machado, that would be terrific. Board members, I know if you're like me, seeing, hearing is one thing, but seeing it at the same time is another. And so while we're waiting for Dr. Townsend Smith to pull that up, do you have any comments about anything that you heard, Mr. Machado, review?
I have a question that arose from it.
Yeah, okay. Vice Chair Duncan.
Mr. Machado made reference to how the funding would be handled if a student withdrew during the course of the year. While we're fact gathering right now, it would be very helpful to, I calculate 8,908 students that are listed on this waitlist. Taking what the average per student allotment would be from the state, could we get a calculation for 8,908 times whatever the anticipated average student allotment would be? In addition to that, I think it'd be too complicated to try to get the different county allotments, but maybe some average of what the county allotments are. So we understand, my rough math, I'm coming up with numbers in excess of $50 million. And so I'd just like to, hey, my math may not be right, and B, so we have accurate information on that in terms of what that would mean in terms of the dollars that would be following these students in this plan.
I certainly think we need some figures to go along with requests. I am going to be emphatically say, I don't think, I don't think that the schools can accommodate 9,000 additional students. I think what they're seeking is an opportunity to serve more students to meet the demands of the students on their list. So, and the 50 million might be inflammatory because I don't need, I don't think 9,000 is the number of students that will end up serving. But I think-
I had not heard a limitation, I apologize. But I had not heard any limitation on what they would take. If that's part of the proposal, then it would be important. See, and what I heard was, that's the number of students, and that would be, you know, what would be there. So if there's some limitation to the proposal, it would be important for us to understand that as another factor on that.
Mr. Machado, I think Chair Duncan is even given fluidity of implementation, that he would be seeking perhaps a maximum number of students from each school that they feel like they might be able to, in this very short window of time, just for this one pandemic year, we're hoping that it's one pandemic year. But how many additional students they think they might be able to accommodate? To give us a ballpark on dollars per people
I will get that information also.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Any additional board members, questions from board members?
Ms. White, Ms. White, this is Ms. Camnitz again. While Mr. Machado is putting together these materials and this information that we've asked for, I'd like to request that he also include the performance data from the Charter School Performance Framework that he just presented to us, those last few pages where he focused on the two Virtual Charters. I'd like to include that in anything that goes out to the board that helps us with this discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz.
Ms. White?
Yes, Chair Davis.
Yep. So, given the situation that we're in with our students, this is an idea worthy of consideration. So I'm glad we're having this discussion today. I do think there's a couple of, I think, fundamental issues. I think we've got to figure, one is the one Ms. Camnitz just raised. We recently just had a discussion around the performance of these schools in increasing enrollment. And what we heard was a clear signal from at least one of those schools that the focus is going to be on raising performance, not increasing enrollment. And now we're talking about doing something fundamentally different than that for all the right reasons. But still, performance is an issue. It's one thing to have choice, we've got to make sure we're providing a quality choice. Second is, we've talked a lot about in generalities, we need a specific plan. The Office of Charter Schools does a great job when a school opens or increases enrollment to get very definitive plans on how the schools will deliver. And we don't have that at this point. So I know that's a lot of work to do in a short period of time. But personally, for me to be, to seriously consider this aspect, I need to know with certainty that the quality will be delivered to a higher degree than it is currently, and that the schools can, what are the exact, what are the numbers they're really talking about increasing enrollment, and how will they deliver? There's just a lot of risk in providing the choice without that degree of certainty.
There are. And I, not to be completely agree, a clear, finite plan will help us make the best decision for the students. I will share with you that we have many low-performing students, I mean, low-performing schools and low-performing districts that are trying to provide this service. And so we're allowing districts to move forward with their own level of online learning. And so just putting another option on the table for us to explore is, I'm very thankful for that you've given us the opportunity to have the discussion. Timeliness will be key because we do have students that need to have this option if it's going to be made available. And so we'll work with the Office of Charter Schools to get that information compiled and back to the board for further consideration as soon as possible.
We'll do that.
Board members, if you have any further questions, if, feel free to contact Mr. Machado for any information that you would like included in that information. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes our report for the day.
Thank you, Ms. White. I now recognize Ms. Camnitz, the new Chair of the Student Learning and Achievement Committee. Ms. Camnitz.
Thank you, Chair Davis. First, let me just say, to take a personal point of privilege, how honored I am to be stepping into the unfeelable shoes of JB Buxton in chairing the Student Learning and Achievement Committee, which I see as right in the middle of the heart of the work that this board does. And I thank you, Chair Davis, for trusting me with this responsibility. First, on the agenda, are two items on action for first read. Both of them relate to testing and accountability and are part of our continuing need for short-term adjustments due to the COVID-19 virus. So I will turn first for SLA 1 to Dr. Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. Good afternoon. As we begin discussion of these two agenda items, we would like to share that during this time of COVID-19, as we look at testing and accountability for the 2020-21 school year, we're trying very hard to look at it through the lens, as all of us are across the state, with prioritizing the safety and the health of our students. And at the same time, considering flexibility wherever flexibility is possible, so that we can support education across our state. Prior to walking through the PowerPoint, we have two items in SLA 1 that are State Board policies, where we are recommending amendments to align with that purpose of flexibility in ensuring the health and safety of our students. The first one is TEST 003. That policy is one that requires that when a student is enrolled in a course that has an associated and, of course, assessment, the student cannot be dropped from enrollment in the course after the first 10 days of a semester course or the first 20 days of a year-long course. We are recommending, given the circumstances that all of our schools are resuming in August, we are recommending to change that for this year only, the first 30 days of a semester schedule and the first 60 days of a year-long schedule. That is being recommended because we feel as though schools, given this different approach to learning and instruction, may need additional time to make that all-inclusive decision as to whether or not a student needs to be dropped from membership in the course to best meet bigger educational needs. The second one is pertaining to our English learning. So as we began the 2020-21 school year, across the entire year, we can expect English learners to come to our state and enroll in our public school. There is a process that is always in play, where when those students come into a North Carolina, they're administered a home language survey, and the results of that indicate whether they take a screener of the WAPT for kindergarten in grade one, and the WEATA screener for grades two through 12. With so many schools functioning in a remote capacity course, and again, protecting the health and safety of our students, we're recommending two amendments to STAT 011, which were disassembled in policy. The first is we're recommending to extend what is typically a 30-day requirement of those assessments to be administered to 45 days, to give more time to accomplish that. The second piece is to allow the WEATA remote screener, which WEATA is the English Language Proficiency Assessment that is administered, and it provides a screener. It is also developed and is providing a remote screener that can be administered in the home, but we know that sometimes can have its limitations as well. So when that is not possible or not the best decision for the student, also there is the found caregiver interview that can be administered during this time of being remote. The caveat is that when students return to face-to-face instruction, at that time, there is then another 45-day period where they are to be assessed with the WAPT screener or the WEATA screener at that time. So both of these policies are being recommended to support our educators across the state as they transition into 2020-21 school year. And they are both recommended for action on first read because, Chair, all of us can appreciate, these are decisions that would need to be made as soon as possible as schools resume instruction for year. So I will pause there. Ms. Camnitz, in case there's any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Any questions for Dr. Howard on SLA 1? Hearing none. We will move on to SLA 2. And before I turn it over to Dr. Howard and Dr. Tomlin, I would just like to emphasize that one of the recommendations that are part of this, of this item, would allow our public school units the option of using the assessments that were not administered last spring, the 2019-20 school year. These would be used to assess where students are and to support their instructional needs. The recommendation that we'll be voting on has been reworded from several days ago to clarify this item. And I'll let Dr. Tomlin and Dr. Howard fill in the blanks here and help us understand this change. But just wanted to make that clear upfront before I let them take over with their presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Camnitz. So as we begin this PowerPoint on testing update for the 2020-21 year, we'd like to go back and just take a couple of moments to think about the context of where we are as we begin this year. So as all of us are returning on either Plan B or Plan C, with Plan B being reduced density, with some face-to-face instruction for some students, and Plan C being 100% remote for all students. So as we all know, in spring 2020, the U.S. Department of Education, and then the General Assembly, North Carolina, waived the assessments from being administered in spring 2020. As of today, it's not a waiver for second testing accountability for the 2020-21 school year. We're not certain that there will be a waiver. We're not certain that there will not be a waiver. The indications that we have as of today is that we would not expect a waiver to be forthcoming in the next few weeks from the U.S. Department of Education. Now, of course, all of us, I'm sure, can appreciate that we're living in a time where things are changing daily, if not hourly. So I could be wrong. But from the context of where we are as we begin school year, we're trying again to think about safety as everyone is, so thinking about stability. So a waiver could potentially come. One indication we had was that it would not come until spring at least. But nevertheless, much of the information that's being shared is that there will not be a waiver. And in fact, Jim Blew, B-L-E-W, who is an Assistant Secretary with the U.S. Department of Education, said last week, in response to a handful of states admitting waiver requests to the U.S. Department of Education, that there wouldn't be waivers for assessments for this school year. So having said that, we're trying to think about these two words, testing and accountability, and decoupling them if we can. And it's very difficult to do that because in North Carolina, we have tied testing and accountability together for almost 25 years. We have a very strong history with it. But if you'll notice these definitions on this slide, testing is looking at the student's understanding grade level content standard. We then take all of that information and we aggregate it, both for the entire population and for suburbs of population and for schools. And we then use other indicators. We make determination about school accountability. But the test itself is an event that is separate from the accountability. And the information that is gleaned from testing is information that can be used, even if there were no accountability model per se. So we're trying to focus on the first question issue, which is the test and what we know today. And what we know today is we have to proceed with the best proposal that we can. We're thinking possibly how to address testing in this year that has so very, very much uncertainty. So on the next slide, we provide, these are what we refer to as the statewide required assessment. And in North Carolina, unlike any other state that I'm aware of, we do have a beginning of grade three reading test. And we have already modified the window to be the first 20 days of school year. And we made it the first 20 days with face-to-face instruction, which means remote days would not, would not count for that. And we did that to try to be extremely flexible with our district to give them as much time as possible to potentially administer this assessment. This assessment is not required of federal law. It is part of every Students at Sea Act plan for North Carolina, and that it has contribution to the school accountability growth measure. It's also part of Reach to Achieve. And it also is used to generate reading bonuses based on, for grade three teachers. The next two, of course, we're all much more familiar with, is the end-of-course test. And this event will begin in December. And this event will begin in December for the fall semester. So we would anticipate having students that must take an end-of-course test in December and then going into January. And then we're also including on this the end-of-grade test, which, like the end-of-course, are required to be administered the last five or 10 days of the school semester or year. And granted, we're just beginning the school year, so we may wonder why are we adding the end-of-grade test on here? I think you'll see on the next slide, we are doing that because we're trying to think long-term, looking down the road, not knowing exactly what is going to happen. So with knowing those are the required tests, according to federal law and according to state law, that as of today, we have to try to administer this year. We're expected to administer. We'll look at the next slide that gives us the recommendation. The recommendation is really intended to be flexible and focus on health and safety of students. So the first part of this recommendation is if students are remote, as many students across the state are going to be with the beginning-of-grade-three test in just a couple of weeks, that those tests are administered whenever the students return to school. And recognize that could be a long period of time for some of these students. But we do have some schools that are beginning in mid-August, and their students will be, and they will take this. There are some other schools that have longer time periods that are under vote. Of course, those could be extended. So we're talking about a long period of time. But if we go back to that idea of test versus accountability, then the information gleaned from the test is valuable whenever it's given. And then the second question that we'll talk about in a moment is thinking about how that then relates to accountability. The second piece of this recommendation is really focused on flexibility. And it reads on the slide as a local decision. And I think that's the key important thing to remember, that we have educators all across the state in different contexts and their communities. And they're the ones who know what is best for their schools and their students within particularly locally keeping them healthy and safety as within, of course, the state-required guidelines. So this part of the recommendation is to allow the local decision, the public school units, and arrange for students to take the test at a school-sanctioned site. And we use that wording just to not limit where that has to occur, just that it's a site that's sanctioned by the school and that meets the Department of Health and Human Services requirement. This intention of this part of the recommendation is not to require school systems or charter schools to insist that students report to a school to have a test administered, to give local flexibility that they can do that if they feel comfortable and if that is what is best for them. But going back to the first part of this recommendation, that is very key as well, is that regardless as we go through the year, the recommendation is that when students are back face-to-face, if they have not already taken the test, then they take the test. So the next slide gets a little bit at the testing window for EOGs and EOCs. It is, of course, the last five or 10 days of the school year. And we're having conversations and recommend that we continue to have conversations to consider amending or making adjustments however is best for the state law, isn't state law. So that, of course, if there was some adjustment to that, if stations could have a, that, then that would give flexibility to our district and our charter schools to be approached testing for this school year. And then the next slide brings us back to accountability. Now, I've already said, we really want to approach it from the perspective of decouple testing and accountability, focus on getting the test administered so that information can be used to help students and help educators across the state. But we all know the intent, again, because we don't have a waiver from accountability, we all know that then, at the end of this school year, we would then be expected to run accountability review. And we would just want to recommend that the perspective, of course, that once we get to the end of the 2020-21 school year, much deliberation, review of the data, the circumstances when the tests were administered, the amount of time of a testing window, particularly if then that data could potentially be used for growth, the percent of students that participate in the assessments. We've already been asked by several, you know, to, you know, what is going to happen because of the 95% participation rate. And we do not know right now. It is still in federal law, and it is still expected. But of course, we can see that that is one piece of information that would definitely have to be attended to and noted in any report where perhaps we do not meet that 95%. And the last rule here, of course, is if a waiver comes for statewide testing or accountability, it has to come from the U.S. Department of Education and then, of course, the North Carolina General Assembly. So before we go to the last part of this discussion, with your indulgence, Ms. Kamitz, it may be best to stop and address any questions around this recommendation that for the required statewide assessments, federal and statewide assessments, that we recommend that students take them if they're unable to now because of their remote status when they return to school, whenever that may be across the school year. Or locals have the discretion that they may bring students in for testing if that is their decision.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. This is very confusing, and you did a great job of walking us through that. And it's obvious that there are some really big questions that don't have answers yet. But given that, colleagues, are there any questions on this particular item of Dr. Howard?
This is Mariah Morris. I have a question.
Go ahead, Mariah.
When we're looking at the recommendation for it being a local decision for public school units to arrange for students to take the test at a school-sanctioned site, will we be providing any metrics or parameters to guide that decision from the state level for LEAs to make that call?
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we have not drafted any of those recommendations. Perhaps we could have feedback from the field on what would be helpful. We, of course, you know, are all, have the guidelines from the Department of Health and Human Services and, of course, you know, the governor's guidelines as well. So within that, I think that is, sets the parameters. And then, of course, across the state with, I mean, I think that is first and foremost what has to be attended to. And then locally, there may be other considerations that can assist in that decision. But I think we would probably ask, you know, all of you as well, but also some of our accountability and testing contacts, if that would be helpful. We would not want to put out additional information that would just be confusing to our colleagues across the state. We would want to make sure whatever we do that was helpful.
Thank you.
Ms. Kamitz. Matt Bruce, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Kamitz. And Dr. Howard, it's nice to hear your voice. I hope you're doing well. And thank you for explaining this option to us. Couple of questions. As I understand it, this would be an optional opportunity for LEAs to administer last year's accountability measures this year or last year's tests this year. So it's optional, correct?
So that is the last part of this conversation. So we-
Okay.
Can you hold that question, Matt?
I can. Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't want to jump ahead. But how about I toss out a question? And then perhaps when you get to it, you could address it. If it is, in fact, an optional opportunity for LEAs to choose to administer those last year's tests, a question I would have is would parents within a district have the option to opt-out of giving the assessment if after being in school closure due to the pandemic, they did not want their child to have to take what might be perceived as a high-stakes test when they return to school? So I want to know if there might be an opt-out provision for parents. And then a second question, more of from an educator standpoint, is do you anticipate that the data that would be provided to districts who do choose to administer those EOGs would be of a granular enough nature that they could actually use it as a diagnostic to drive instruction? And specifically, would those reports be more granular than the end-of-year reports that they currently receive? So those are my two questions, and I appreciate you taking them.
Thank you, Matt. And we'll hold on to those until we move to the next. Any more questions about the testing that must occur this year and how we are recommending that we proceed with that? Hearing none, Dr. Kamitz. Sorry.
When they're whole.
Mr. Hall.
And maybe I need some clarification. Maybe I keep the wait. But what about the fourth grade reading assessment? That has to be done within the first 10 days of the year, full year. Is that still not a part of that?
So that assessment is part of K-3 literacy.
Right.
That is the grade-three diagnostic assessment.
Right.
Dr. Galloway ever sees that. It's my understanding that that assessment can be delivered remotely in the home. And so that is the difference. The federal and state-required assessments, EOGs and EOCs and the BOG III, they must be administered in a school or on a sanctioned school spot. They cannot be administered remotely.
This is David Segal. The fourth grade assessment can be done remotely because it's part of the Read to Achieve, as was shared. So they, families could do this in the home. The teacher could administer the fourth grade assessment remotely or face-to-face.
But the 10 days is still in place?
The first 10 days, yes, sir.
That's still in place, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Hall. Dr. Howard, do you want to continue?
Yes, thank you so much. So the last piece of our discussion today is this possible use of the end-of-grade assessments at the beginning of the school year. And just want to stress at the beginning of this conversation that this capability is one that North Carolina has that I'm not aware of another state that has. We, of course, in North Carolina, develop our assessment in partnership with our colleagues at North Carolina State University. And so we own the test. We're not paying a vendor for the test. And we're able to have access to intact forms for the end-of-grade mathematics, the end-of-grade reading, and NC Math 1 to allow, on a voluntary basis, districts to use these assessments at the beginning of the school year. Now, the important thing to remember about this, and Mr. Matthew Bristow Smith, you brought up an excellent point in that these assessments are the summative assessment, the end-of-grade assessment. And so, no, they do not have the diagnostic granular information one would get with formative assessment. Now, we are providing some resources that are more diagnostic in nature to the districts to use voluntarily as well. But this use for these end-of-grade assessments is to provide an academic achievement level and a scale score, a percentile, the Lexile score and the Quantile score for mathematics that will inform parents and teachers and school leaders of student's achievement on the previous grade-level content standard. So it's really positioned as if a district or a charter school wanted to know how their kids were doing as they returned to school. And there's been lots of input on this conversation. And one of them has been, does it occur immediately when schools start back? So absolutely, going back to our firm commitment to health and safety and flexibility, we would not, you know, impose a testing window that this has to be done in the first 15 days. We're thinking much broader than that, that it is available for local use if they would do it through at least October 31st, with the reserve that they could be available later in the year. If, for example, students did not come back and to face-to-face administer instruction until January, that they could possibly then use these as well if the local education unit wanted to know how the students are doing. These particular assessments are available onsite at a school and in the home. So we are providing these for administration in the home. So that is very key and very different. So all of the remote students that were not getting face-to-face instruction would have the availability to participate in these. Now, I think also, Mr. Bristow Smith, you raised another important point about the possibility of having this an option for parents. We have not discussed an option for parents. We can have more discussions around that internally. You know, it may be that that latitude is given to the local districts for them to decide whether they would like to do that. So I think that is definitely something that probably needs more conversation. Key to this use of these tests, though, is it is not for accountability. It is not for statewide data. It is not for comparison of schools, of one school to another. That is not the purpose. The purpose is to provide information through parents, to teachers, school leaders, who just want to know where our students are today, content standards that that student would have been instructed on from the previous school year, from the 2019-20 school year. That it's really for information only. It does not get down to the granular. However, just knowing a school may want to know what percent of their students are each of the different academic achievement level. If we can go to the next slide. It's very important that we acknowledge that one of the possible uses of this data is the ability for SAS to rerun the projections for spring 2021. So SAS, who is the proprietor for EOGs, every year in the fall, they take the previous year's test data. And then they use all the historical data and testing for various students. And they're able to share what we call projections. And that's looking down how students are expected to do in spring 2021. Without any additional test information, which we do not have because of not administering tests in spring 2020, these projections will just remain the same for 2021. They will not be updated. Schools that chose to voluntarily participate in these EOGs would have their growth projections updated. So that would be one benefit. The other point here about growth is, of course, it is possible that not, not required, but it is possible some of the growth information could be valuable in the overall model as we move toward calculating growth in the future. But that could be dependent upon the span of the test. Wanting to give flexibility, it may actually be that it's not really conducive to doing that. So the main takeaway from this slide really is that schools that were interested in doing this would have the benefit of having student-level projections for spring 2021. So that was really part of the initial conversation in thinking about doing this. The takeaway here, I think, if I could just sum up, three very critical points. One, voluntary, not required. Two, local data, not used for accountability, used for schools to have an understanding of where their students are, students are now, if you were to say, perhaps, A baseline. And then the third piece is the availability to provide student-level projections for spring 2021. So with that, I will pause.
Dr. Howard, I know that we talked about this in our committee meeting. Are you going to mention, or is that for a later date, the use of check-ins?
Oh, thank you so very much. I appreciate that so much because because we have been working very diligently to look at everything we have access to, again, going back to that North Carolina owns those assessments. And we have gone very deep in trying to say, what can we do? And we have gone very deep in trying to say, what can we do, what can we can provide to assist schools and charter schools as they resume their schedules in August? And NC check-ins, we are making available so they can be administered remotely. And we're also going to have it so the teachers can then review the NC check-ins remotely with their students. NC check-ins is used by about 60% of the students across the state. And going back to Mr. Bristow Smith's comment about that granular information, that is where we do that. And so we wanted to make sure that we were able to continue doing that. We also are responding to requests that we've had for a couple of years now. We have not had NC check-ins in reading at grade three because there are so many other things that grade-three students have. But with the remote situation as we began 2021 school year, we are preparing NC check-ins for reading grade three. And of course, remember, NC check-ins is not voluntary. It is not required. So these are just things that we're making available for use in a way to be supportive because we do have the capacity to do this in North Carolina.
Dr. Howard, questions on this part of the recommendations?
Ms. Camnetz, this is Olivia.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Oxendine.
Thank you so much. Dr. Howard, thank you so much for providing such a clear explanation of testing and especially drawing this, making some very good, clear points about the purpose of using the test from last year. Because we've received a lot of, rightfully so, we're always appreciative of hearing from the field, from teachers and parents and board members, local board members and district superintendents, giving us their good feedback to help us make good decisions. So we've heard from a number of teachers about testing, the concerns around testing early in the year and so on and so forth. But I think it's so important in the communication back to the field to emphasize those three very cogent points that you just made around the need of having a handle on where students are, and this is only for the betterment of knowing how to begin and continue instruction from a diagnostic point of view. Because I think that really changes the whole flavor of testing versus assessment. So that's my one major takeaway from your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oxendine. Any other questions for Dr. Howard?
Ms. Camnetz, this is Mariah Morris. I have another question.
Go ahead, Mariah.
Dr. Howard, yes, thank you for the very clear explanation. That cleared up a lot of my questions. I do have a follow-up question about the expectations for how districts who choose to give the spring 2020 EOGs will operationalize this at the school level. My question is, are you expecting schools to do a full, secure testing site where we operationalize a lot of the things that we would do to make our EOG secure when we give them at the end of the school year, such as having proctors, such as shutting down a lot of the school movement, having people in the hallways to monitor bathroom, et cetera?
I think that is an excellent question. And I think we have to remember that some students will be doing these from home. The data is not going to be used at accountability. So we'll have guidelines as we normally do. And of course, there are some things, such as our students with disabilities who are provided accommodations. You know, those type of protocols must be followed regardless. But I would venture to say that, no, this is not a typical lockdown. And of course, for several years now, we've had in place where locals make the decision about how they use security proctors as well for the test administration. So I appreciate that feedback. We can go back and look at that. My recollection, we did soften things quite a bit, but I can go back and look at that again. I think that's excellent feedback. But I also would recommend that locally, you know, if depending upon the parameters of how tests is administered, you know, consider that when looking at the results.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. If I could have a follow-up comment, please? I appreciate your comments about how there would be flexibility and making sure that we don't fully go into the secure testing site operations. Because I think a lot of the concerns and the comments that we received from the field over the last few days, we're really trying to balance the social-emotional needs of our children who are coming back after remote learning during a global pandemic to a school site that looks and feels very different from what they're used to. And balancing that with the idea that we would go into secure testing mode, that can be very stressful and taxing on our students, especially some of our youngest learners who are very perceptive of adult stress and anxieties in the buildings. And a lot of times, testing situations can be very stressful for our children. And so I think a lot of the concerns that we were hearing was really grappling with those social-emotional needs versus the secure testing site. So I appreciate those comments a lot. And if you could just carry those ideas with you as you think about how to operationalize this, I would appreciate it.
Thank you for those questions, Ms. Morris. I'd like to suggest, partly in the interest of time, since we are voting on this tomorrow, that those, unless they're critical to whether we go forward with this, that we ask Dr. Howard to bring us some of those operational questions at a later time. And are there any other questions that do need to be asked right now?
Ms. Camnetz.
Yes.
With print diligence, there is one thing I have not mentioned, and I think I would be amiss if I did not.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So we have been getting feedback from testing coordinators and accountability coordinators and directors, and a few handful, very small number of superintendents across the state. And one of our groups, we met this week and got some feedback from, the feedback was very clear that there are districts who feel confident using their benchmark assessments that they already have in place, and they would not use these assessments. So just wanted to make sure that I'm sharing in full disclosure that some of the feedback we have gotten is that there are districts who are not interested. And then we have also heard from a couple of districts that weren't interested. So we really have no way of knowing at this point in time, extent to which these would be used. And from where we sit, because we're really structured already to provide these assessments, that is fine with us. It's more about giving the opportunity and the availability and the support if it is so determined that it would be used. So just to make sure I share that.
Dr. Howard, any other questions on this recommendation before we move on? Let's move on. This is also an action item, SLA 3, K-12 computer science standards adoption. And I just have to say that this is a very exciting culmination of a lot of intense work over the past almost two years. And here it is finally ready for us to move forward on. So this is a really positive thing for the students in our state. And I will turn it over to Dr. Hemphill to dive into this with us.
Thank you so much, Ms. Camnetz, members of the board, and stakeholders. This is a very exciting moment in North Carolina history as we elevate for the first time in North Carolina's history the K-12 computer science standards for state adoption. Today, we're going to review the process that has helped us to arrive here at this final draft of standards for our state. But also, we're going to celebrate the cross-sector representation and the many voices, not only here at the department, but also from parents, teachers, schools, and district administrators, business leaders, nonprofit and after-school programs, as well as national experts when it comes to computer science education and charting the course forward here in North Carolina. So the purpose today, of course, is to approve the K-12 computer science standards, but looking at our state implementation and review and revision phases from the State Board Policy SCOS 0012. This truly represents standard processing at its best. We have spent the past 15 months in exploration and installation. Not only have we been collecting and reviewing feedback from various methods from stakeholders which have been helping us with this specific content area of computer science, but we've also analyzed contemporary and current research. We've established a data review committee that has looked at computer science across the 34 other states who have already adopted computer science standards. We facilitated committees' reviews and revisions, and we've evaluated those committee findings in order to move forward as a state. This year will mark anticipated approval based on this month bringing in those standards. And we will move into implementation for the 2021-22 school year, which will mean we will not only launch and disseminate state-level standards implementation plan to local districts and charter schools, but this year, we will also facilitate statewide training and support for educators on the revised standards. And along that same vein, we will also collect data and evaluate the implementation of those revised standards, making sure that we're listening to teachers, to parents, to district leaders, and school leaders as to how we can continue to make this iterative process better. The research and evaluation in the K-12 computer science standards for North Carolina began with the CS Steering Committee as part of the State Board of Education's Special Committee on Digital Learning and Computer Science. This committee worked in collaboration with DPI, Friday Institute, at North Carolina Colleges of Education, and the Lieutenant Governor's Office. So it's really important to note that before the formal work began, not only with the Computer Science Department and CNI Department here at DPI, but this process included over 1,000-person hours of research, iteration, and vetting to review the widely-accepted CSTA standards to ensure that we took those 117 original standards and created a best fit to meet the needs of North Carolina students, teachers, schools, and districts within our state. All of the work within the research and evaluation from the Computer Science Department was guided by the North Carolina General Assembly Report to expand computer science to all students in North Carolina K-12 schools. Our department was very, very intentional and kept our focus on the two goals in creating, first, creating and contribute, not just using and consuming computer science in the digital economy, but also the second goal of making sure that our students are actively engaged as informed citizens in a complex, technology-driven world. And we have truly seen the impact of this research and evaluation throughout this pandemic as countries, particularly in North Carolina and our state, have also really tried to respond to the need of having workers that are adept at computer science, have the computational thinking skills to be employed, but also how can we create career paths with computer science to move them forward. The first recommendation of that report was to create rigorous computer science content standards for K-12 students. So again, we're very excited to be at this point, and we know that we could not have done this work without mobilizing our CS stakeholders. We are very fortunate to have reached out to and received over 150 applications through two application cycles with educators, which I'll get into here in a moment. This is monumental because we are literally creating the first academic discipline that has been added to the department within over a decade. In doing this, we had to be very intentional. We're very grateful for all of the stakeholders, not only here at the department, but also throughout our states and in higher education as well. We have used several outlets that you can see here in order to continuously ensure that our stakeholders in the field understand the process and where we are, and that we needed their help in order to make sure that the voices were elevated as we created these standards and gleaned feedback. So we have used everyone from our CNI leaders, listserv, to computer science teachers at the Summer CTE Conference, teachers who have been teaching CS discoveries and CS principles for years, our digital integration facilitators, curriculum leaders, and of course, our AP and IB teachers, to reach out and make sure that we had a robust and dynamic field of educators to respond. Across the eight regions, we were very intentional as well to ensure that we had CS representation in our writing and review teams. And as I've mentioned before, this was critical because the conversation of differentiation continued to bubble up to the top as we started thinking about computer science conversations in the Northwest region, which are very different than if we talk about computer science in the Sand Heels and the Northeast. And this is due to the computer science ecosystem that our students and our parents, our families, and our school leaders are being exposed to and have access to, which we'll also consider when we look at the public comment reviews to the standards themselves. And so it was important that as we went through this work and developed each writing and review team, that there was representation from each of those eight regions, not only from the schools, but also from external stakeholders as well. Because we wanted to make sure that when we graduate students using these K-12 standards, that they're ready to be employed, that they're problem solvers and solution seekers who can make North Carolina better. In total, we had over 84 teacher leaders, K through 12, that were able to lift their voices through the writing and review team's process, 12 school leaders, 11 district leaders, 13 curriculum leaders, and 34 external stakeholders. And it's also very important to note that we also had international confidentiality statements and international feedback as well from Ireland and Spain. So we had different entities that were able to come in, that went through our process, application process, confidentiality statements, and gave feedback. As, again, I would say, North Carolina will be the 35th state to adopt the standards using those CSTA standards as a foundation. It is also important to note that the considerations for the standards were anchored in the revised Blooms taxonomy. So this is the framework that guides all of North Carolina's standards, and this was actually one of the best cognitive processes that our department has seen when it comes to really taking each individual standard to make sure that there was clear language and clear understanding so that teachers, when they look at the CS standards, they're really able to understand what are our students able to come out of this with, what are the learning processes that should take place, and at the end of this, how our students master each of the grade band standards. The guiding principles of SCOS 0012 were also feedback-based, researched-informed, improvement-oriented, and process-driven. We truly wanted to remain true and authentic to that process as well. In a moment, when I go over the timeline, you will see that a couple of the processes we had to stop and pivot because we wanted more voices at the table. Because this is the first time that our students will see computer science formally in their K-5 grades, we had to do a second call for applications, which I'll talk about here in a second. And we wanted to make sure that our elementary teachers in particular were heard to help build that foundation so students could be successful in middle school as well as high school. So when we begin to look at the timeline of activities here, we see this work began in January of 2019 through June of 2019, and that was with our Computer Science Steering Committee. Again, this brought together national experts as well as nonprofit after-school programs, administrators, and business leaders, very robust conversations about how we could take the CSTA standards and make them fit what our North Carolina students and teachers truly need. It started with over 117 standards, and it went through a three-tiered process of editing, analyzing, and revising to make sure that at the end of the time of our committee, we had 97 standards that matched North Carolina content, essential standards, and made it sure that it was also going to crosswalk easily into what our teachers are teaching our students. In June, from June to August, we also began to analyze the data to inform the recommendations that we needed for the call for applications. And also, we also got the approval from State Board for the standards to be added to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. And at that moment, we opened up our call for applications. In the meantime, we also researched other state standards. We wanted to understand what our neighboring states in the Southeast were doing when it comes to their adoptions, as well as what's happening on a national scene. We were very grateful for Code.org. They have created a process for states to codify CS as a standard course of study. And so we started to ask ourselves and our team members really critical questions about what computer science could look like, K through 12. We had over 50 applicants to the first call for applications, and from those 50 applicants, we elevated 34 writers and four reviewers, of course, as I mentioned, representative of all eight school board districts, state board districts. And when we created our webinar, we got such an amazing opportunity to really backtrack, to make sure that our stakeholders knew, you know, where we had come from, the research and evaluation that had happened throughout this process. and get them ready to come together in Raleigh on September twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And I have to say, not only am I grateful for the team members, not only the CTE Department, but also our department, but that was a wonderful two days of not only collaborating with the social studies team, and we met on two different sides of the building, but also the conversation that happened. Yes, teachers and the teachers who answered that call were hungry for standards. They were very excited to be able to lend their voices. And so we began the work of creating teams for each grade band. As you'll see in the final state of standards, in the final draft of the state standards, we have organized the standards into grade bands by K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and by course in high school with Introduction to High School and the CS Discipline-specific courses. Again, we were very fortunate on our high school teams to have teachers who have been teaching AP Computer Science Principles as well as middle school teachers who have been teaching Computer Science Discovery. So that really helped us hone the language, the vocabulary, and the outcomes that we wanted for students who were intentionally signing up for CS courses, and also students who wanted an introduction to computer science to understand what it was about and how they could move their career path forward. After that team convened, we also had conversations with Charlotte Dungan, who was a representative, and she's also the state's first artificial intelligence architect. She was one of our curriculum reviewers on the team. And we started talking about the fact that computer science is not just limited to robotics, coding, or even STEM. Artificial intelligence is a principle that has been heavily vetted, not only by the National AI Committee and Foundation, which Charlotte sits on, but she was able to work with our elementary, our middle, and our high school teams in September to talk to them about writing AI principles that would address the growing need for teachers and students in this exploration of CS. One thing that is interesting to note is that computer science, once the standards are potentially adopted today, this, North Carolina, will be the first state in the country to have artificial intelligence principles that are guiding the work and conversation in our schools. After those teams convened in October through December, we came back to review the feedback, and we had an iterative process where we continuously went back to the teams with any changes or revisions that we made because it was very important to us to make sure that we had their voices and approval before elevating. During the first week in January, we were super excited to bring together thirty-two reviewers of external stakeholders at the Friday Institute from colleges and universities, the state board districts, technology business organizations, and nonprofit organizations to really sit down and talk about the end user. So they were able to take a backwards look at the standards and talk to us about what they were seeing in individuals who applied to work in tech in North Carolina and across the country. And so they were able to give us amazing feedback about building the foundation gradually from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade of computer science. And that was a very, very dynamic discussion that helped inform our professional development that we're going to talk about here and moving forward. Also, at the end of January, we really and truly wanted to make sure that our K-5 teachers had a voice in this work. We have seen amazing computer science programming across the state. We've heard from elementary teachers who wanted to know more. So we opened our application process again specifically for K-5 teachers to not only help them understand the history of computer science in North Carolina and where it was going, but also so that we could glean challenges, celebrations, and concerns with them across this process. So we developed a K-2 team and a 3-5 team, and this team worked for almost two weeks to put together an integrative as well as living and breathing framework, a matrix, that will be rolling out here in a few months that integrates each of the CS standards into core content areas from math, science, STEM, ELA, and social studies. And we were very grateful to the CNI team, who sent their section chiefs to sit down with our teams, and they worked alongside them to map those standards and crosswalk them into what a computer science standard looked like to satisfy a math standard, and how could we integrate that authentically? So that is going to be a living and breathing framework that we will begin to roll out. We are hoping to create professional development opportunities so that teachers can really see how computer science lives within the standards and so that they can understand that it is an augmentation to their content standards. In February through March, we finalized those review team's analysis, and we were able to summarize the public review data as well as provide that feedback. And we finally had the first draft of revised standards that had gone through the process. In March, we created the public comment platform. Unfortunately, it was suspended by the third week due to COVID, which we completely understood. And in order to focus on the urgent need to the field, we made the decision to halt public comment so that our students, our teachers, and our schools were able to respond to the urgent needs that were arising due to the global pandemic. In June, we were able to reopen the public comment after taking some time to get feedback, not only from our ambassadors, but also from teachers in the field. So we opened up the public comment for two additional weeks during that time and with over three hundred and thirty-one responses to the public comment, and we were able to revise, analyze, and approve the final draft of revised standards. We sent that final draft to our writing and review teams here in July, and we received one hundred percent approval from our writing and review teams. And we were very, very grateful for their responses. I want to read one comment that came from the reviewer who voted to approve the final standards. "I certainly approve the CS standards as written, and I look forward to this being a part of our children's lives. These computer science standards serve as a minimum of what should be accomplished by the end of each grade band. And it is also my understanding that students can excel beyond the minimum when opportunity, access, and resources are provided. I love that the standards are a baseline that have been provided as structure and guidance for all North Carolina students and staff as expected outcomes." And so there were many comments like that where teachers were just very grateful that they saw the revisions, they saw the process, and the voices being elevated in terms of how we were specifically differentiating these standards to meet the needs of our students. And so when we begin talking about professional development, we want to continue to elevate our voices so that our students are getting the best computer science instruction from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Depending on the face-to-face or virtual blended model that we choose, keeping in mind social distancing and of course, being safe, we want to start with RVT training, with Revised Blooms taxonomy, so that our teachers understand why it's so important that those cognitive processes not be ignored as we're thinking about elevating standards such as choose appropriate devices to perform a variety of tasks or illustrate how information is broken down into smaller pieces and reassembled. This will help us not only help our teachers understand the standards, but understand computational thinking. Computational thinking is the underpinning of all of the standards, and so it's important that our teachers understand that as well. We also are going to be creating resources unpacking the standards. We will create a glossary of terms. As you can imagine, computer science comes with its own set of vocabulary, and we want to make sure that our educators in the field understand that. And then crosswalks of the CS standards into core content and standards areas, not just for K through eight, but also for high school as well. We also will continue to collaborate with our district and regional support team members and charter schools. We understand that communication and delivery will be important, but also we have teacher leaders in the field who have already been doing amazing work in computer science. I've been able and fortunate to bring many of them to present to the state board. But since this news of the public comment with computer science standards, I've received countless phone calls and emails from parents and teachers who have shared some amazing things they're doing. And we're actually going to be starting a series that has been written by an elementary teacher in what she has done as computer science, and we'll be making that available to all of our elementary teachers as well. For future considerations, we also wanted to take it one step further. There were comments that were standard-specific, but also general feedback that was given, and we broke all of those themes down, and we came up with five basic themes that really encompass what the field wants to make sure that the computer science standards address. We talked today about bias and equity, understanding, and I love what Dr. Flood said about gaps being opportunities. Computer science is going to be an academic discipline that will not wait five to seven years. We will have to revisit this every year, understand how we are providing equity for our students in the field, teachers, support, as well as district resources so that they can maximize computational thinking and maximize their understanding and mastery of the computer science standards. Also, of course, technology requirements. While much of the computer science standards is rooted and grounded in computational thinking, having access to devices is a conversation that has been ongoing, and we want to understand what conditions mitigate us providing as much support as we can to the field. We also heard from the field in terms of implementation capability of instructors. Some of the terms that we talked about can be a bit daunting for our teacher leaders. So how can we make sure that they go into classrooms with the best understanding and the best grappling of what's computer science standards can do for our students? Access to curriculum and resources, which are things that are ongoing and we are creating as we speak, and also concerns for complexity. This is a paradigm shift. We understand the concerns from grades K through two about thinking about computing systems and network and the internet. But what we have to understand is that many of our five-year-olds are entering school as the graduating class of 2035 with so much more device knowledge and tech knowledge than ever before. And these standards are set up to help us respond to that. Then last but not least, in thinking about the strategic plan and understanding that every student in the North Carolina public school system graduates from high school, prepared for work, further education, and citizenship, we want to make sure that we are intentional with the computer science standards to understand that according to the U.S. News and World Report, by 2026, the country will need two-point-six million computer scientists to run our organizations for coding, software developing, and engineering. This is post-secondary education at its best, and we want to help to make sure that we are having measurable outcomes and goals that really help our students across our one hundred counties and one hundred and sixteen LEAs and our charter schools be prepared for that work. And last but not least, that every student, every day, has excellent educators. This is a new academic discipline. These are new vocabulary measures and new standards that we are going to work very hard to integrate into the curriculum so that teachers will see an invisible barrier between computer science and their academic core content areas. So we're going to focus on the specific objectives to develop measurable components within our framework. We want to create a longitudinal study that will follow the increase of equitable learning opportunities for outcomes within our North Carolina students, teachers, and school leaders. And as we have conversations continuing on with our writing and standard review teams, we want to make sure that we're measuring those components within the strategic plan. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to elevate for adoption of the K-12 computer science standards, and I'll open it for questions.
Before that, I would, if the Lieutenant Governor is still on the line, I know that he has been very involved in this work. And Lieutenant Governor Forrest, would you like to add anything to what Dr. Hempel has just provided for us?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if I really have anything to add, but I just want to say that this was a phenomenal process in a record amount of time. It normally takes five years or so to put together a set of standards. This was a year and a half, and I think this could be a great model for how we do standards in the future for these types of subjects that are really needed today in our community. And we recognize there were thirty thousand jobs out there and a billion and a half dollars' worth of salaries waiting on the workforce. That's when the team swung into action. So great work to DPI, the Friday Institute, our teachers, business leaders from the steering community, from all across the state and country, people like Lenovo and Google and SAS and others. It was just a phenomenal effort in record time. And I think that this is going to be a great model for how we move forward. So thanks to everybody for making this happen. We should be really proud as North Carolinians that we are in this game now, and I think we'll be a leader in the future. So Dr. Hempel, thank you to you and your team and everybody else.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Yeah, as we've said before, this is a new step for the students across the state and will prepare them for the world that they're going to inhabit as adults. Board members, any other questions or comments for Dr. Hempel?
Ms. Kam, I have a quick question of Dr. Hempel.
Go ahead, Dr.--
Olivia. Dr. Hempel, thank you so much for the work that you have presented to us today. It does represent enormous time and thinking and collaboration. You made a statement a few minutes ago about the crosswalking to other parts of the curriculum. I wonder about the relationship of, I'm thinking more in terms of our elementary mathematics, about the relationship between performance and mathematics and these standards. If our students are not performing at the level we would wish, will you think there will be a relationship or any kind of impediment to mastering these computer science standards?
I think, Ms. Austin, that this will be an augmentation of some skills that have previously not been tapped into. So when you think about the math and science standards, which are so closely related, I think that there's some opportunities here for us to think about, how can we approach math and science from a computer science perspective to elevate skills that we normally have not measured with students? So for instance, when I think about the standard, for instance, one of the K-2 standards for computer science is illustrate how information is broken down into smaller pieces and can be reassembled. So you can think about breaking apart numbers or breaking apart processes, or you can create an opportunity where students are able to take computer data. They may have a proclivity as a coder to be able to break that information down and put it back together. We're literally going to start to see the integration of those standards, and students are going to be checking two or three skills off of the list within a menagerie of content standards. We may not call it the math, or we may not call it science or computer science, but we're going to start to see mastery of skills. So I think this is going to be a different approach. This is going to be another pathway for students to learn core content through a different modality.
Okay, you're good. So in your professional development, with your teachers around the state, there will be an emphasis on how to do the integration of these standards with--
Absolutely.
--the science or--
Right. Absolutely, yes. And we're going to make it very clear with each of the standards, we've already started the framework, each of the standards, it'll be very clear whether you click on math, science, English Language Arts, or social studies, which standard you're walking across.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Further questions for Dr. Hempel before we move on? Thank you so much for just excellent work. And the scope of the input that you've gotten across the state and across the country is just phenomenal. And I know we're going to love watching this over the next year, two or three years, and seeing the effect that it's having for our students. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kam.
Moving along quickly to our discussion items. SLA 4 is a recommendation for the Council for Exceptional Children, and I believe Dr. Thomas is going to present this to us.
Good afternoon, board members, Superintendent Janet Stanson, Lieutenant Governor Forrest, and members on the board today. Before you, we have a recommendation. This is for discussion. We'll come back next month for a vote. As you are aware, our council is a requirement of IDEA. And therefore, within that, we have recommendations that must be made by the state board, the legislature, and the governor's office for positions on this council. What we're bringing forth to you today at this point are recommendations for the parent vacancies that we have. You should have a chart that shows the Council on Educational Services for Exceptional Children's current membership. And you can see that there are two vacancies there at the very top that should be parents of children with disabilities. The council and our staff have worked together and have made a recommendation, but I believe you have four resumes to review to fill those two vacancies. If you will look further down in that document, we have two-year appointments. From the governor's office, there are two positions that one of them is vacant, and we are working to try to bring-- There are two positions that one of them is vacant, and we are working to try to bring a recommendation from the governor's office for that appointment as well. We have been able to secure a House of Representatives member as well as a recommendation from the House. We are still waiting on a senator and a recommendation for a parent. It's our goal that when we come back to you in September, we'll have all those other three positions that are currently vacant with nominations or recommendations. And I'll take any questions you have at this time.
Questions for Ms. Thomas? Hearing none, let's move along to SLA five, again, a discussion item, another. We've seen, we've been getting very, very regular reports on the work of this literacy, early literacy. So this presentation is going to be fairly short, and I think we're all very familiar with this. I do need to give a shout out to DeBuckton, who really worked together just over the last many months and to bring us to where we are today. So thank you, DeBuckton, for that. And who will be today, I'm not sure. I know Dr. Gallaway has been in the heart of this work, but is she? Oh, it looks like Ms. Taylor presented, so Ms. Taylor, you'll go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Kam. Good afternoon. My name is Casey Taylor. I service a regional literacy consultant for K three literacy. I extend thanks to the board, to Dr. Stickall and Dr. Gallaway for this opportunity to share the K through literacy plan for reading achievement. I also extend my appreciation to the members of the cross-divisional team from DPI who worked diligently to develop an evidence-based, user-friendly, interactive resource to support educators and stakeholders as we seek to improve early literacy outcomes. The purpose of the comprehensive plan for reading achievement is to improve reading achievement in public schools. It also fulfills legislative requirements of the Excellence of Schools Act. The guidelines allow us to implement and continuously evaluate a comprehensive plan to improve reading achievement in the public schools. And we are also to base the plan on reading and instructional practices of strong evidence effectiveness in current empirical research in reading development. This plan was very collaborative development process. It involved a cross-divisional team made up of expert representatives from K three literacy, OEL, IABs, PC, and ELA, who all contributed to the planning, development, and review of the comprehensive plans for reading achievement. Additionally, the plan went through a stakeholder review and feedback process, which included the S E literacy task force and the birth through 12th grade screen committee. Feedback from DPI representatives and stakeholders across the state, as well as nationally recognized researchers contributed to the final plan. As you can see on the presentation, a detailed process for planning, writing, reviewing, receiving feedback, integrating feedback was established and. The comprehensive plan for reading achievement serves as a guiding light and a strategic lever to advance K three literacy for systems alignment, instructional shifts aligned to the current science of reading, and the provision of direct district support. The plan also eliminates evidence-based practices, teachers, school, and district leaders. Furthermore, the plan celebrates those educators who are already implementing reading classroom practices aligned to current reading research. A component of the plan include a purpose introduction, transformative equity practices which serve as guiding principles, a summary of science of reading research, the board approved a definition of birth through third-grade high-quality reading instruction, evidence-based practices in early reading instruction, leadership and implementation resources, along with standard-aligned instructional resources, assessment practices, and resources appendices and a glossary can be found at the end, followed by references. I'd like to highlight today the transformative equity practices that led this part. In February, the cross-divisional team came together to discuss and identify guiding principles to inform the development of the plan. Our team quickly recognized and acknowledged that referring to these as guiding principles would be insufficient because literacy is a social justice issue and an equity issue that impacts academics as well as learning outcomes and opportunities. Our transformative equity practices, which under guard not only effective but sustainable actions for literacy achievement which affect all learners. Diversity, high expectations, science of reading, differentiation, and multi-tiered systems of support are crucial and motivating factors which play a key role within each transformative equity practice. The transformative equity practices for literacy, the blitz that literacy is foundational for all learners, evidence-based decision-making is critical, and professional learning is essential to equip educators at the service and service and leadership levels. As Dr. Flood discussed this morning, we must become engaged, and it must be a continuous process. Transformative equity practices advocate for strategic system planning to ensure all young scholars in North Carolina receive equitable instruction aligned to current reading research. The K three literacy team has also developed a communication plan to advance the implementation of the comprehensive plan for reading achievement, once it is approved by the state. The communication plan includes professional learning, webinars, TED Talks, which will consist of videos highlighting transformative equity practices, and expansion of resources through the Read, Do, Achieve repository. As a K three literacy team, we firmly believe that as a state, collaborative board members, educators, and stakeholders, we can reach our goal to have every young scholar in North Carolina reading at or above grade level by the end of third grade with the comprehensive plan for reading achievement as the guiding light to illuminate transformative equity practices and improves student outcomes until every child. I thank you for the opportunity to discuss this presentation with you, and would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So much, Ms. Taylor. Any questions from the board on this wonderful work and powerful work? Hearing none, we will vote on this next month and move on to our discussion item, which is SLA six, brought to the General Assembly, implementation of remote instruction plans. Dr. Ren and Dr. Shaw Coltrane.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mrs. Kam. This is Dr. Ren. Ms. Coltrane will not be with us today, so I'm sorry you have me, but I think that we can go through the initial results of the remote instruction plans. So I'm very pleased to bring you this afternoon the preliminary results of the remote instruction plan, but I do want to go over first what they are and what they are not. Because of the evolving situation between remote instruction plans and some confusion between Plan B and Plan C, I want to remind everyone what they are. First, they are a response to Senate Bill 704, and they were due to DPI on July 20th. These are instructional responses just for remote learning, and they were designed around 15 components. Thirteen were provided by the General Assembly, and two were added by the state board to capture information on our English language learners, our academically gifted, and our McKinney-Vento learners, and we also added a question around limitations. All the components are designed to guide public school units in developing a framework to deliver quality remote instruction. And we also are gathering information to report on our online and offline resources that will be used to deliver remote instruction. And initially, the plan was for five days. However, with Senate Bill 113, LEAs and charters now have the flexibility to add remote instruction days if they need to for student health and safety. What they are not is they are not a Plan B or Plan C. Plan B and Plan C came out of the DHHS guidance document, and where districts were recommended to create a Plan B and C. So I just want to clarify that these remote instruction plans do not include topics of health, safety, transportation, et cetera. They are totally zoned in on student learning and the framework for quality remote instruction. So this initial look will prepare us for the full report that Ms. Shaw Coltrane and I will bring you at the September board meeting. And so I want to review exactly what our report will include. It will include the actual plan that each public school unit submitted, and a statewide summary that will include all online remote instruction resources listed by each public school unit, all offline remote instruction resources, a list of any public school unit that is only using offline resources, the number and percentage of school units that did and did not provide plans addressing every item, and the strengths, challenges, and trends that we've noted from the plans that have been turned in, and then any other data that is deemed by the state board to be useful to the Joint Legislative Education Oversight Committee in evaluating the delivery of statewide remote instruction. So that is what the full report will have when we come back together in September. So the current status, and I'm very proud to bring this to you, the response from each PSU has been remarkable, and we're very proud to say that we have collected 329 plans, and we are only missing one plan. And the one plan that we're missing was due to some circumstances that could not be avoided, and that one PSU is working still to get that plan turned in. And so the responsiveness has truly been remarkable. We are reviewing the plans for basic completion and coaching, and we're not being evaluative of their work. We are going to survey each PSU and internal staff members to gather strengths and challenges that they are experiencing now before we come back together in September, and that full report with requirements will be presented for approval. What we know is this, and I think many of us who've ever worked with online learning and teachers, is that quality remote instruction improves all instruction. So the components for clear communication, purposeful design, as we've seen as a trend today, there's many positive outcomes of our current situation, and we expect to see that as well. We are seeing some very strong plans turn in that we know will provide a good framework for remote instruction, but also improve traditional instruction in the future.